Yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm up on that.
I mean, I do after I stare at it and figure that.
Oh, there it is.
Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. We'll start with roll call.
Benson.
Here.
Sarra.
Here.
Hoffman.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schram.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Attorney General.
Here.
You have before you the minutes of the work session of June 24th and the regular meeting of June 24th. What is your pleasure?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you. Next, you have before you the schedule of bills. What is your pleasure?
Move that we pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Is there any commission discussion? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission about our bills? Roll call.
Minor.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Schram.
Aye.
Weber.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
Sarra.
Aye.
Hoffman.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye. Motion passes. Now, city managers' report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission and members of the public. I usually do my city manager's report from the desk up here, but tonight I wanted to come out here because I have someone special for you to meet. Our mission is to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And the person you're going to meet here in just a minute knows that wholeheartedly. Whether she knew it or not, she's living our mission. So, yesterday, I went on a walk on the bridge, as I often do, and I saw a lot of fireworks debris. And I thought, oh, gosh, we had such a great Fourth of July, but we've got some debris on the bridge, and what are we going to do? So, in the morning, I visited with Adam, and I said, what should we do? You know, there's a lot up there. Should we sweep? Should we go handpick it? Should I call Todd? And we kind of hoot and hummed around, and I thought, well, we'll talk about it at staff tomorrow. We'll figure it out so we can pick all that stuff up. Well, just a few hours later, then, I got a text from an individual in the community who said, are you aware of all the complaining that's going on in social media? People are really complaining a lot about all the garbage on the bridge left from the fireworks. And she said, but, she said, instead of complaining, we have a citizen who stepped up and just took it upon herself to clean that stuff up. And that little lady is Naomi Wiesler. So, I have something special for her. I want to thank her sincerely for solving a community problem that adults couldn't solve right away, but I think it's pretty neat that instead of adding to complaints or saying negative things, she found a positive solution. So, I think that a round of applause is in order, but also what's in order is a Culver's gift card, because what says "thank you" better than a lot of concrete mixers, right? So, I have that for her if she wants to come up with her mom. You're welcome.
Want to say anything?
Okay, thank you. Well, I think that's just great, and I think when we have the opportunity to recognize people that go above and beyond, and when our young people can teach us a lesson, that's really telling. So, appreciate Naomi and her efforts, and I don't know, I think you got a future city manager on your hands there. That's all I have for the commission unless they have questions of me.
Are there any further questions for the city manager? In that case, we'll move on to public appearances. This is a time where we invite members of the audience to address the commission about an item not on our agenda. We do have one scheduled appearance tonight, so we'll start with Casey Haberman, the director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And then after that, if there's anyone else in the audience who would like to address us, we'll ask you to step to the podium as well. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Nathan, and good evening. Like Nathan said, my name is Casey Haberman. I'm the director of the Convention and Visitors Bureau here in Yankton, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank you, City Manager Leon, Mayor Nathan Johnson, and fellow commissioners for inviting me to just take you through a quick overview of the annual report from the CBB. So, I know you guys have been very excited about tourism and have been extremely supportive over the past several years. So, I just wanted to take a moment and thank you for the confidence you have in me and the ongoing financial support to continue to move Yankton forward in a positive direction for the entire community of Yankton. So, thank you for that. Before we dive into the report, I wanted to share the CBB's mission statement with you from the 2014 strategic planning session. The CBB's mission is to increase the economic impact and facilitate the continued development of the visitor industry in Yankton. Therefore, I think it's good to mention that the main goal of the CBB is not to drive sales for ourselves. We don't exist but for, to promote tourism businesses in the community of Yankton. We gain nothing personally from any dollars spent on marketing Yankton. Our goal is to increase sales for all tourism-related businesses in Yankton and in turn drive sales tax, or drive tax revenue. I think it's also important to call attention to the ROI on your tourism marketing investment. According to the South Dakota Department of Tourism, we know that for every dollar spent on tourism, you see a $51 return in visitor spend and $3 return in tax revenue. Therefore, it's one of the few investments that you know you're getting a solid return on. I think it's also important to point out the five potential funding sources for the CBB. Obviously, the BBB. We have the hotel bid. We have partnerships like the Lewis and Clark Recreation Area Partnership, which has been a fantastic partnership for the CBB, one that's been extremely successful and fruitful for everyone involved. But some examples of that partnership are the Community Co-op partnership with the Rec Area. We split costs, add costs on the Southeast South Dakota Vacation Guide, Missouri River Tourism, the South Dakota Vacation Guide, and many other ads. The Brand USA Video Partnership that we just completed here a couple of weeks, or was it last week? And then other various projects like splitting the cost of our welcome bags to help us save expenses there. Additionally, the South Dakota Department of Tourism budget. So, those are tax dollars that are collected from the state through our tourism industry members across the state. Those dollars are utilized by the Department of Tourism in their annual budget. One of the only ways that we can access these dollars and ensure that they're being used to promote Yankton is by partnering with the state in different programs like the Community Co-op program, the Great Getaways Direct Mail Pieces, Brand USA Video Shoot, ABA sponsorships, and many other that we do participate in. And then we have advertising revenue. And while this is another opportunity for us to generate revenue, it's a revenue stream that's extremely time-consuming and takes away from time being spent to promote Yankton. So, I just wanted to run through those couple of things before we hop into the report, and I'll kind of take you through that now. But I think each of the commissioners has a copy in front of you. Make sure I'm going in the right direction here. All right. So, on page three, you'll see the overview of the city results here. We've got sales tax that was up 4.06% over 2017, and then bid was up 4.14%. If you flip over to page four, you'll see the county. We raised $74 million in visitor spend, which was up 3.3%, whoops, go forward, 3.3%. We brought in $4.9 million in state and local taxes. And I wanted to point out that 5% of all the visitor spend in the southeast region comes from Yankton County. And so, when you put in context that that includes Sioux Falls and Mitchell, I think we should be really proud of that amount of money that we bring in. The next page, for those of you that were on the commission last year, you heard me talking about the halo effect. And so, basically, the halo effect came from a Longwoods International study in 2016 that states that people that visit a location or are exposed to positive marketing of a destination tend to have a more positive impression of that location. And that just lifts surrounding entities like business development, real estate sales, college recruitment. And so, all of those things working together really promotes a destination as a good place to live. And so, that's the halo effect in a nutshell. Then, page seven, we launched a brand-new website in 2017, but as you can see here, things continue to trend upward. We saw our sessions up 48% over 2018. Total users were up 26%. On page eight, there's a snapshot there of the top five metros that visit our websites, and it's Omaha, no surprise, Omaha, Sioux Falls, Minneapolis, Sioux City, and then that little Lincoln Hastings Carney area. And so, those are our target markets within the Community Co-op. So, we can see that our marketing is working there. On page 10, we have some of the additional co-op programs that I participate in with the Department of Tourism. And so, you can see there that we have the Peak Magazine co-op with 700,000 impressions, Great Getaways Direct Mail Piece, Direct Mail Shoulder Piece, and Group Tour Magazine. So, those impressions there lined up for you. On page 11, that's a snapshot of the Community Co-op program. So, just for background information for maybe some of the commissioners that were not involved last year, that's again a pay-to-play type of situation. So, there is a minimum investment required to participate in that program, and that's right now $40,000. And so, the scenario that we have worked out right now is the CBB provides a $30,000 investment, and then we partner with the Lewis and Clark Recreation Area for the additional $10,000. And that allows us to partner with the state then for an additional $40,000 with an $80,000 marketing campaign. So, within that campaign, we acquired 5.3 million impressions. And then, obviously, you can see our target markets again are in Minnesota, Iowa, South Dakota, Nebraska, Illinois, as well as our target audiences there. It's kind of outlined for you. Visitor Guides are, an overview is on page 13. We distributed nearly all 20,000 visitor guides that we purchased last year and in some of the different ways that we distributed them. One of the tactics was through our welcome bags. So, we distributed, and this is on page 15, we distributed over 3,800 welcome bags in 2018, which was an 82% increase over 2017. And then, in that little graphic there, you can see the different months and the different events and conferences that we worked with to get those distributed. And then, we have, on page 17, we have a list of industry education tactics that were deployed. One of the most successful tactics that we utilize is our Visitor Pulse newsletter. So, that is an email that goes out to industry partners and yourselves. So, if you are not receiving that newsletter, please just let me know, and I'll make sure that we get you a copy of those, and they typically come out the last week of the month. But we're very pleased with the open rates and click-through rates on that, so we know that our industry members are reading and engaging with the email. Our open rates are 34% compared to a benchmark of 14%, and click-through is 19% compared to the benchmark of 6%. We also receive notes regularly from the South Dakota Department of Tourism, including Secretary Jim Hagan regularly congratulating us on the newsletter and thanking us for our efforts. So, we are very proud of that effort. Sorry, I should have flipped to that next page because that kind of gives you a snapshot of that, of those stats. So, on page 20, we just have a list of different marketing initiatives, one of them being the West Roads Mall Partnership Program that we have. That is another very successful program that we have. It's a pseudo visitor center that's located inside of West Roads Mall in Omaha, which is one of our target markets. That one program generated around $7.8 million impressions in 2018. We also added two television screens outside of the entrance of the space in 2018. That just allowed us to have a lot more flexibility to promote our partners and the community, and also made it more engaging and generated more interest in the space. You'll also see on that page our Facebook. We saw a 52% increase in our Facebook followers. And then, we also started a new email program that's in the marketing partnerships list, and that's been tremendously successful as well. Since its inception in May of last year, we've seen a 152% increase in the size of the database, and that number rises daily. But again, our open rates and click-through rates are outstanding when you stack them up against the benchmarks. The next page, 21, you'll see a list of publications that we advertised in in 2018, and then there's some examples of the various ads that were placed. Below that, you have a list of travel writers and influencer hostings that we did, and those are truly worth their weight in gold, providing us countless impressions from the various projects that they complete and promote on our behalf. So, page 22 has the list of trade shows that we participated in, either being there or by partnering with some of our regional tourism offices, and then the number of visitor guides that were distributed at those trade shows. And then below that, you'll see the list of tourism grants that we distributed last year. Page 24 is a list of some of our major events. Yankton is well-known for hosting events. We typically host around 30 events every year, and, you know, we know that these events really generate exposure for Yankton. They increase the positive perception of Yankton and South Dakota. So, we're extremely grateful for the important work that these event organizers do, and typically, there are countless volunteer hours to make those events happen. So, again, we're very grateful for those. On page 25, we have an overview of a fam tour that we did last year that was tremendously successful, partnering with several of our local partners, Ben's Brewing Company, Rebe Outdoors, the Six Marine Hop Farm, the lake. But we hosted five travel writers here throughout the day and had different experiences for them. They wrote three stories so far. We're still waiting for two, but from those three stories, we see, we saw 12.3 million impressions. And because of the success of the tour, the department is actually working on hosting the tour again, but this time it'll be with international travel writers, and that will likely take place in 2020. On page 27, it's just a list of some of the recognition or awards that some of our tourism partners received in 2018. And then, on page 29, I just wanted to call out some of the notables about Lewis and Clark Recreation Area and mention that Lewis and Clark Lake continues to be our Mount Rushmore, our star attraction. We know that the lake brings around 2 million people to, within a 20-mile radius of Yankton, and that includes both the South Dakota and Nebraska side. But I think it's important to recognize that they are still within 20 miles of Yankton, and I do think that we have a fair share of those folks that do end up venturing over into South Dakota and into Yankton as well. So, again, it's our shining star there. But if you look through that list, I think it's really interesting to note that the Lewis and Clark Recreation Area is the second-most-visited state park in South Dakota behind only Custer, and it is the fourth-most-visited attraction in the entire state, following only Mount Rushmore, Custer, and Badlands National Park. So, again, we're tremendously lucky to have the lake here and happy to partner with them to promote Yankton as a whole. And then, on page 20, or on page 31, I just have a list of the different professional development efforts that I did complete in 2018. It was another huge year for me. Spent a good portion of my time expanding my network, acquiring knowledge, and advocating for both Yankton and the state of South Dakota. And then, one thing that's not listed in this report is I spent a good chunk of my year, towards the end of the year, working on the Dive in Yankton project, with the final vote taking place in December. So, I should have put that in there, but I didn't. It was kind of a biggie. So, lastly, I wanted to point out that this is a very exciting time here in Yankton with the new attractions that will soon be added to our tourism arsenal, with the Heather Family Aquatic Center, the Ruth Donahue First Dakota Field House, new hotels being built, Crane Youngworth renovation, the new football program at Mount Marty, the NFAA addition, as well as air rifle being added to their repertoire. But these attractions, and these attractions will absolutely benefit the entire community. So, I think it's very important that we identify the role of the CBB in marketing these new attractions. And there must also be a conversation about where that additional funding might come from and how that, those dollars will be managed. So, right now, I'm working on securing a new strategic plan for the CBB. The last one was completed in 2014. I was given some recommendations by the Department of Tourism, and I've narrowed down the options to the facilitator that I think is best suited to deliver an actionable plan that's going to be tailored to our unique situation. But however, as with all well-done strategic plans, they're expensive. So, I'm currently looking for creative ways to cover the cost of the plan, and this is not a budgeted item for me. But this would entail requesting private investments from our major stakeholders. So, that's what I'm working on right now. But as the tourism industry continues to evolve in Yankton, I feel it's extremely important to have an objective evaluation of our program and the industry in Yankton to not only expand our marketing efforts, but to ensure that we're currently maximizing our dollars to the best of our ability. Again, I would like to reiterate my gratitude for your continued support of the CBB and the work that we're doing to promote Yankton as a tourism destination to benefit the entire community. So, I will take any questions you might have for me.
So, you were able to hire additional staff this past year. How did that help with what you were able to accomplish in 2018, or 2019?
Yeah. So, the new hire has been doing a phenomenal job. So, she, the help that she's providing me is working on the different, kind of like, digital marketing, visual marketing pieces. She helped me put together the annual report. She couldn't have come at a better time when I was working on, you know, Fam Day. I was working on the Omaha promotion this year, earlier this year, and I can't tell you how helpful it's been. And yeah, so it's been very fruitful.
I would also add with the strategic planning, I think it's a great time to begin that process. So, we look forward to being a part of it, and hopefully, we can figure out the funding mechanism for it.
We're working on it.
Casey, a couple of years ago, we talked about the fact that Yankton needs more hotel rooms. I'm guessing that's still the case since we haven't added any hotel rooms yet. Yet. Do you have any idea what that number is that we would need, or is that something the strategic planner might help us understand?
There would be a lodging survey done with that strategic plan, and so, that information would come out of that, for sure.
Are there any further commission questions? All right. Well, thank you, Casey, for all you've done in the last year, and we appreciate you visiting with us about all those great accomplishments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission during public appearances? If, I see two of you in the audience, if you could step up to the dais and address us. First, introduce yourself.
Excuse me. My name is Edward White, and this week, I got a postcard from the city of Yankton, and talking about our water intake system on our intake isn't good, and it's somehow about it not up to sats, and they're working on it. But, and some of that water isn't great for you. Some people got problems drinking bottled water, and instead they're going to tap water. I want to know how long is it going to be, when is the water intake going to be up to snuff?
We are up to snuff. I'm glad you got my postcard, Ed. We did have a contamination level in our water due to trichloromethanes that we needed to report per the South Dakota D E N R. So, we test our water every day, and if we have certain levels of contaminants we're required to let folks know that, and we did hit that mark. So, that's why that postcard went out to everyone. The water isn't completely safe to drink. You don't have to drink bottled water. You don't have to boil the water, anything like that. You know, it's part of that issue may have come from infiltration into our system with the high amount of water that's coming into our system. Could be another number of problems, but we are back in the range where we need to be. This has happened before. As we move closer towards being online with our new water plant, we should see even less of that. Now, there are some very specific cases where people might have very, you know, rare medical conditions where they may have to be extra careful, and so, that's more or less why we send those things out. So, if people have specific questions about that, they can contact our water department. And if they have questions about their own health and the levels in the water, they can visit with their physician. But you should be okay. I am drinking bottled water tonight, but only because that's what was in my car. I'm going to fill it up from the tap.
Are you putting time? The water work okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, you bet.
Thank you, commissioners. Mayor Johnson, my name's Jennifer Powell, and I, with Lisa Larson, who is in another meeting tonight, would like to tell you a little bit about an event that we're planning. Lisa and I both work at Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health in the Youth and Family Department, and we're both pretty passionate about promoting and protecting the well-being of all children. And so, we kind of got together and discussed this, and we thought that maybe instead of sitting and complaining about it and just talking about it, we thought we'd do something. And so, I'd like to announce an event at Meridian Bridge this Friday at 9:00. It's called Lights for Liberty. It's Yankton Vigil for Refugee Children. It will be a vigil to shine a light on inhuman conditions faced by refugee children at our border and to encourage the elimination of for-profit detention centers. Following several brief introductory comments, we will observe a moment of silence, and then we will shine our lights as we walk as a group to the center of the bridge in a show of solidarity. To help effect change, postcards with pre-written messages to our federal legislators will be available at the end of the vigil. We welcome the attendance of all who share commitment to seeing asylum seekers treated with basic dignity and concern for their physical and psychological well-being. We look forward to you, for young and old, for everyone joining us, and we are inviting friends from counties and states as well. This is a worldwide event. There is a vigil in Aberdeen. There's another vigil in Sioux Falls, and we've heard some rumors, although we haven't seen it, of Rapid City. So, we'd just like to invite you and let you know that that's what we're planning. I do have little cards to pass out if you'd like them. Thank you.
Jennifer, thanks for your work on that. I appreciate it very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the commission? All right. We will move on to the consent agenda. We have one item under there today, and that is setting a date of July 22nd. Everyone leaving, thank you for attending tonight. We are setting the date of July 22nd at 6:00 PM in room number 114 of the Regional Technical Education Center for our next work session. And what do you anticipate the topic will be, Amy?
I anticipate we'll be talking about FEMA and the programs that may be available to us for application. So, we'll meet with them on the 17th, and I think we'll have some items to discuss. If not, you'll hear ahead of time what topic we will present.
And that is the only item on the consent agenda. What is your pleasure?
Move the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this? Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to old business, we have consideration of memorandum 19-148 regarding the request for a special events on-sale liquor license for August 2nd from the VFW, and that event will be at the 4H Grounds at 709 Whiting Drive. What is your pleasure?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Number two under old business is a public hearing in support of memorandum 19-150, excuse me, ordinance 1022, and ordinance on the franchise agreement with Midcontinent and Vast. What is your pleasure?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Moving on to new business, consideration of memorandum 19-147 regarding resolution 19-29, which is a replat of 616 East 29th Street. Kirby Hofer Construction Company, Inc., is the owner. What is your pleasure?
I'll move the memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
Benson.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Number two under new business is consideration of memorandum 19-149 regarding an agreement between J. and H. Cleaning Service and the Yankton Community Library. What is your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any commission discussion on this item? Would anyone in the audience like to address the commission on this item? Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. There being no other business on tonight's agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and contractual matters under South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.